First order of business, everybody get a chance to read the minutes from the?
Yes.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a move, a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, last meeting.
Motion to approve minutes, got a second, those in favor? Alright, approve the minutes, alright, first order of business. Let me get a sheet over here. Alright, ZV two five one eight, two forty one Georgia Street, St. Simmons Island variance. Consider request for variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance section seven oh one to reduce the right side yard setback to zero feet. To allow for expansion of existing deck. Property is located in R six, one family residential district and located at two forty one Georgia Street. St. Simmons Island, Georgia, partial zero four dash zero eight three one seven. Frank Lynch, applicant and owner. Can we hear from staff, please?
Good morning, Nisi Carroll, Glen County Planning and Zoning. The applicant is requesting variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance section seven oh one to expand an existing deck. And is in violation of the side yard setback. The site is in the R six, one family residential zoning district where the side yard setback is seven. However, this lot is a corner lot, so that right yard setback will be ten feet. According to Q public records, the home was constructed in nineteen ninety-three. And does not encroach into the required setbacks, however, the homeowner has installed a deck. And gate that extends beyond the setback line and encroaching to the public right of way. May twenty twenty-five, the deck was constructed and attached to the house without obtaining a required permit. There is a working without permit issue resulting in both zoning and building code violations. A application was made to the Glen County Building Inspections Department. Upon review, staff did inform the applicant that a R buoy application is needed instead of a R A B. The records do indicate that code enforcement issued a stop work order on this project May eighth. However, during code enforcement's last inspection on May twenty-eighth, it appeared the project was complete. Here is the site where the star is. Is the survey. It's the zoomed in version of the survey and dimensions are, measurements are circled as well. Here were the submitted plans. This was May third. That's a picture of the stop work order. Says zoomed out view. This was June tenth. Staff does not recommend approval due to a self-imposed hardship.
Okay. Alright, anybody have any questions for staff or?
How did the survey there did not? Official survey did not show the deck as it is now?
Correct, it did not include it.
That's, is that, is that what was in the bottom half or something?
I'm not sure of the deck.
I'm sure the dotted line indicates the deck.
The who? The dotted line? I'm not sure. So the start, yeah, that's where the proposed, the deck is now.
That's where it is now.
Yeah.
And the, the adjacent stairs there, another dotted line, is that, that was existing?
The stairs are existing, let me see if I can show. There were.
I, the stairs were moved before.
I don't think the stairs are in there at this point. They removed the existing stairs.
Correct.
But, but the new stairs are not in.
What that piece was there adjacent to the stairs?
Yes.
I wonder what that was?
Go back to the survey, please.
Okay. This one?
Yeah. So it appears that those were possibly previous stairs and we can, we can hear from the applicant on these other looks like those were previous stairs which. Complied, but then the dotted line with the hash.
That is.
See where it's indicated is a gate. Yeah, we'll have to ask. We can ask them. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Dave Carver, building official. The dotted lines, I don't know what they represent, but you can see the stairs up against the house. The stairs, the original stairs were not in the setbacks. And you can see in one of the pictures where the stairs were removed and the tabby shows the outline where the, where the stringer and the treads were attached.
Okay.
That dotted line, unless we can zoom in, has nothing to do with the deck. The deck, the existing deck on the house and the stairs were on the same plane as the outside wall, they were not in the setbacks.
Okay, so previously it was fully in compliance. Okay. Alright, anybody else have anything? Nothing else?
No.
Alright, thank you, alright, at this point, we'll move to the applicant. If you're here, step to the podium, state your name. For the record and talk to us.
Yes, my name is Frank Lynch, I'm the owner of the property. And I purchased the property roughly about four years ago. Me and my wife decided to move into the property full-time here. That's why we've had some work done at the property. I was told by the gentleman helping put the deck in and stuff, that it was okay with setbacks. I asked him that specific.
Exactly what?
That it was okay with the setback. Asked that question specifically to the gentleman because he stated I was attaching to an existing deck, which is what's on that survey right there. We, we added the deck to, to be able to have an outside living area. As I stated in the letters that I've sent you and as well as my wife, my health conditions are, are deteriorating. I'm a diabetic since thirty-one and things continue to, to get worse as I get older. So there could be a time in my life I'm restricted just to the top level of that house. There's an existing deck that was part of the house that's in the rear. Back there, the, the house, it shows it on that survey. So we were hoping very much to have that outside living area. It wasn't until I was advised of the stop work order that I even realized. That, that I probably should have come down here myself and ask questions to the county. And not to the gentleman building the deck. We're hoping to live here a very long time, we like it here. We've had a house in Brunswick for the last eight years that we sold to be able to move into our property here.
Alright. Why, question when the stop, stop work order, well, I guess first off, the person that you hired to, to do the job, were they a licensed contractor?
No, sir.
They were not?
No, sir.
After the stop work order, while was work continuing after that?
No work continued, I spoke to the, the chief building inspector. Cause I wanted to see if I could get the stairs at least temporary, so I had a second exit out of the house in case of fire. No work stopped, started on that deck, nothing was ever touched after the stop work order. I was here when the stop work order was posted.
Okay.
The work that was continued was the installation of the pool. And once the pool was finished, they put the existing fence back on. That's the only work, I do have pictures of, of when the work order was posted. And I can assure you, I didn't allow anybody. I came down to the county the following day to make sure I understand everything I needed to do. And I've told the contractor or the, the gentleman, do not touch that deck. And it's never been touched since. There's been visits from the county. Especially when they were putting the fence back up. And you know, that's, that's in compliance with code too, and I've got to have that pool secured. But the fence was already there.
Technically, the fence is across the property line also, but that's another discussion.
The fence was built at, when I bought the house. And I've had a lot of visitors, cause I'm right there in that walking area and, and a lot of the neighbors were very, very pleased with what I, what was being done. My neighbor across the street, who's the only neighbor that has visibility to the deck, you know, he, he wrote a letter, he does not have an issue with. The structures to the, to the north of the deck, one's about a hundred and eighty feet. To the northwest of the deck, that has very little visibility, I can see the roof line of that house. And then the other property is the condominium, which is about a, pretty close to almost two hundred feet, but the tree lines. Prevent a lot of visibility.
Visibility aside, I saw it from Frederica when I turned in, but that aside, that's, that's kind of not what we're, what I'm looking at. My big issues with it are, it was done without a permit. And, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, ignorance of the ordinance is, is not an excuse for me.
I understand, sir.
It's, it's you as the homeowner, it is your responsibility to do your due diligence to make sure that, that things are done correctly. You know, three of us up here are contractors. And, you know, we, we encourage our, our clients to. Make sure that we're doing everything correct and we involve the county building department. And rely on them a lot to make sure we're watching RPs and Qs and doing things correctly, so that ignorance of the, the ordinance is not an excuse in my book. The other big issue I have is that this is so close to the road, to an active road. Yeah, it's definitely a traffic hazard and a safety hazard for sure, so. You know, me, me personally, I'm, I'm not on board with this one, I do have a lot of issues with this one. My colleagues, they can, if they have any other questions.
I, I, I agree with, with you Cliff, this, this is just too close to the road for me, I mean. You know, I like the design, it's cool, it's cool, you know, but, but still, I mean. If, if you're, if you're on that deck and a car hits that fence, bam, what's gonna happen?
Alright.
It's gonna, that deck's gonna drop and whoever's on it is gonna drop too. I'm just, this one scares me.
No, I, I, in my opinion, it, it, and this is my opinion, it needs to come down and be brought back within compliance to get back away from that road.
Which is you stating is ten feet setback, not seven?
Since it is a corner lot and. The requirements for the current staff or building department can tell you exactly what it is. It varies from neighborhoods, but this one, I believe you mentioned before that it is, since it is a corner lot. You know, there's twenty foot setback on the front and ten foot on the side, not the standard seven. So anything that was there can't exceed the previous existing footprint on that side of the house. You may get any other?
Yes, sir, I have a question. If that were approved. You call the contractor tomorrow morning and tell him that it was approved. What other work has to be done?
One, I have to, I applied for the permit, so he can't start until I get a permit. The only work that needs to be done is the stairs. Basically, the landing is in place, it was in place when the stop work order happened. So the stairs need to be put in and about probably two different top plates on the, on the handrails.
I have a question for Mr. Carver, building inspector. You, you've obviously seen this deck. Is, is it built to code?
No, it is not.
It's not?
It's a, it's illegally attached to the, the way it's attached to the house and being supported by two four by four posts that are supporting the old deck plus the roof. That's gonna be a lot of extra weight that's gonna be supported on those four by four posts. And for it to pass, it would need a, a state certified licensed engineer to okay it or design it. Or they can put extra posts up under that into the deck at the house.
Okay.
A ledger board that's attached to the house.
Can you go back to that picture?
This one?
The one you had before, that one? So those are the posts you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are supporting the existing deck?
Yeah.
And your roof?
Yes.
And they're only four by four.
Well, they're also skimmed out.
They're only four by fours.
I understand, sir.
And you're, you're attaching a much larger deck to that, so I cannot determine or, or call if that's gonna be supportive. So that's going to have to be a call by an engineer.
Right.
That would have to, okay that. Also, your ledger board that, that's attached to the house that your deck is attached to, it's supposed to be through bolted to the inside and I'm sure it's probably just lag bolted. That too can be signed off by an architect or an engineer, but not by the building department.
I understand, I think I, you're the gentleman I spoke to?
I did.
Okay, so you told me I was gonna probably need an engineer to look at the beams, so I've, I've had an engineer look at it. I haven't paid him for the letter yet, but I had an engineer look at it. I didn't have him look at the plates on the house, which I can have him look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, anybody that's got anything for the applicant? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, at this point, we'll open up the floor for public comment. If there's anyone here to speak for or against this particular application, please step to the podium, state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'll open the board up for discussion. And/or we'll entertain a motion.
Put the motions back up.
Yes, sir.
The deck before it had rails on it?
That?
From the end view. Could go back. There, no, that's not it. John, we don't have a picture of the, of the deck being tagged without the handrails?
I just put the tag up. What's the name of the tag, tag that happened, reported it to us?
Okay.
But there was more.
The, the guard rail, handrail. Was added after the stop work, the rest of the deck was already up and completed, it was just the handrails which. You can see at this point, our pictures showed that the handrails weren't there, that's when we stopped the work, at that process, at that, at that point. The posts were there, but the, the horizontal rails were not.
That's what it looked like.
Cause I was there today, the posts, the stop work, the handrails were up, but you could see prior to that picture.
The, the, the stop work order was posted, the, the sticker was actually posted afterwards. But the project, the project was stopped prior to them going out.
Did they contact someone? Cause I, I, I just contacted that day that that sticker was put up, that's when I was notified.
That make a difference?
Regardless.
Yes.
It's in, it's in the setbacks, the reason there's an extra three feet on, on a side street is for safety and that's why it's at ten feet.
Yeah.
A car can easily veer off and, and destroy the deck and whoever's on it.
Now, I've got one more question, Mr. Carver. It appears that in this picture we're looking at here, the. Property corner is located on the inside of this fence. And I, and we're not, I don't think we're here.
Property corner is located in the road.
That's not correct. The property corner is out.
There we go.
Well, so this picture I'm looking at right here.
It's just, it's given the location of it from the survey, so that you can go out, if you can set a feet off.
Come, come to the podium and say.
Say it here.
If you go back to the, I can show you where this is.
Thank you.
Somebody should show the fence a bit.
Yeah, you see the property corner in the street?
Yeah. You can see the property corner in the street right out there.
There has been a concrete post set there though.
That concrete post is to the left of that catch space and you see going across the street.
I don't know what that concrete post be set for.
It's got Georgia Street on it.
Alright, either way.
And then the other property corner, you're, they're showing the fence, but the other property corner is actually in the curb and gutter.
Okay, so now go back to the, to the picture with the, with the stake in the ground. Right there. I mean, it appears to me that that, that fence is on the outer, outside of that stake, at that location.
So I pulled a string from property line to property line, it's not, it's not outside the property line.
My eyes are seeing.
If you were at the house and looked at the state, it has a note on the side of it reference you to the pin that is out in the asphalt. Yes.
Mr. Wildsmith, look at the survey, it should locate the fence on the survey, we just can't blow it up big enough for us to see it, but it appears to be. The fence on the survey appears to be on the inside of the line, but that's, I don't have one in front of me.
So, what, what the owner's saying is there, there's a note on that stake, that stake should be. Out in the, in the asphalt some?
Further? Yeah, it's seven feet, it's seven feet to the east, there's a pin in the asphalt. Glen County had surveyors out there, not, not more than, I think it was Monday, and they were re-surveying that line.
It's in the asphalt, it's probably a location.
Okay.
An actual corner, but that, that pin, that stall right there may be an offset.
Okay.
I don't know how much it was.
Alright.
Should say on, should say on, on the top.
Okay.
Alright.
The bigger issue is the.
Thank you.
Ten foot encroachment. Alright. Alright, so we're at the discussion, floor is open for discussion and/or motions at this point.
I can't get on board with this, this, this is safety issues and all the way to the property line, I just, I can't, I can't. I'm gonna make a motion that we deny ZV twenty-five eighteen, two forty-one Georgia Street.
I'll second it.
Alright, got a motion and a second, those in favor of the motion? Alright. Has been denied.
Thank you.
You do have the option to appeal this board's decision with the Glen County Board of Commissioners.
And what is the time for it?
Pardon me?
Yeah, you have to file an appeal letter within thirty days, the next commission meeting it could be heard at is the July seventeenth meeting.
And where do I file the appeal?
Yeah, just send your email to Nisi.
Alright. Moving on, second item, ZV two five one nine, one oh six Dunkeld Lane, Sea Island zoning variance. Consider request for variance to the planned development district GC dash two eight dash nine five to allow reduced setback for pool. Property is located one oh six Dunkeld Lane, Sea Island, Georgia, partial zero five dash zero zero six eight zero. Walter B. McClellan Junior and Christina McClellan, owners and applicants. Can we hear from staff, please?
Good morning, Moore East Coastal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. The applicant is requesting a variance from the Forest Cottages PD for a twenty-five foot, twenty-five foot encroachment of a proposed spa. Spa to approach three and a half feet into the required seven foot rear setback. There are no front or side setback requirements in this PD, only rear. The applicant submitted a burnt building permit for the pool, POL twenty-five thirty-six. And the Ocean Forest POA's Design Review Committee reviews that, reviewed their proposal back in March, including the rear setback intrusion and approved it.
And what was that last part?
What's that?
And what'd you say, they reviewed and what?
Yeah, no, the POA's Design Review Committee reviewed this proposal and they approved of it back in March. Pool was previously on this lot and it was removed. That pool had a six, six point six foot setback into the rear property line, as depicted on the survey, so there was about a half a foot encroachment in the setback. This is an aerial of the section of Forest Cottages where this lot is. This is a survey of the previous pool that was removed, showing the previous setback, previous intrusions into the rear setback. This is the new proposal, this is the view of the whole lot. This is a cutback of the proposal, showing the spa going three and a half feet into the rear property setback. And this is the stated hardship from the property owner. The hardship arises from the fixed constraints of our lot, specifically the location of the existing home and the limited depth of the rear yard. Which restricts design options if required to fully comply with the current setback requirements. Without the variance, we would be forced to significantly reduce either the pool size or essential deck area, resulting in a less usable and practical layout for our family's needs. And this is an email from Bill Edenfield from the Sea Island Company, just stating that the Ocean Forest POA had approved of this proposal.
Well, I can't see it, can you go back to that? What's the distance between the two lots?
Oh, yes, alright.
Did it say fifty-two feet?
Fifty-two point nine one.
Yeah, fifty-two nine one.
Fifty nine, about fifty-three feet in common area in between that lot and the next lot.
Buffer, so to speak.
What's that?
Buffer, so to speak.
Yeah, sure, right. Yeah, I believe the property owners that are here today.
Okay. Alright, anybody have any questions? All right, anybody have any questions for staff on this one?
Uh, no, sir.
Yes. Can you go back to the beginning when you were reading?
Sure.
The words, okay. If you look at the first dot, there, there's, let me see, no, I'm sorry. Let's go to the third dot. So, it says there that the Ocean Forest POA reviewed the proposal and approved it, permit for the pool. Now you go to the first dot up there, and now they're talking about a proposed spa. So I don't see where the Ocean Forest POA approved the spa. I see where they approved the pool. And so now, if you go back to that piece, the, where it showed the original pool, maybe, maybe the next one?
That's, that's the.
Yes. Okay, so, oh, no, I know what it was. Go one more, please, one more. The, from the contractor, that's my question.
Okay.
He sent, the con, I guess it's the last slide where the contractor sent, he wrote on behalf of, can you pull that up? There. My question there, I'm, I don't understand why the contractor wrote on the behalf of them and they did not write, be, and, and this may not be for you, this may be for the applicant. As a president of an HOA, of a large HOA on the island, I would never send something to, I would never have a contractor speak for us, saying that, him saying, he saying that I, that we approved it, when in fact, I don't see the accurate, I don't see the specific document that has been sent to you folks of what they, what they said.
Yeah, no, I understand. Bill Edenfield.
I don't know if you have it or not.
Sure. No, I don't have that document, but I don't know how the Sea Island Company works, but Bill Edenfield is basically the planning director for the entire, the entire Sea Island. Right.
Okay.
He's the head guy.
He's the head contractor for the island.
Well, he, he's not a contractor, he represents Sea Island itself.
So he can speak, he can speak for that.
Sure, yeah, like I said, he basically is like the plan, the planning director.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, anything else for staff?
No.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, um, now we'll move to the applicant. Here, please step to the podium, state your name and.
Hey, Mrs. McClellan.
Sorry, state your name there for the record.
Oh, sorry, Christina McClellan, the homeowner. So, a couple of things, though, to clear up. So, no, Bill Edenfield is not our contractor, period, in the story. He is associated, as this gentleman was saying, with Ocean Forest and is head of the, is he still head of the Property Owners Association? Or he, I'm confused as to, to be real honest, exactly what Bill's purview is, but he seems to kind of run everything on Sea Island and tell what's approved and what's not. Everything has to be kind of, as I understand it, from property owner, run by him. So, but, so, no, he is not our contractor. Is it thirty point eighty-one? Sorry, Hank Rowland is our contractor. And so, but we actually do, above and beyond that, is we actually do have the approved, and if you guys don't have it, we brought it, approved plans. When it says pool, that's, well, we have the actual approved plans. This plan stamped approved by the Ocean Forest Properties Association, which includes also Sea Island approving it. So the confusion came in when our contractor and I learned a big lesson from this guy, and I will, trust me, do this in the future, told us that because it had been approved by Ocean Forest and Sea Island, we were like, okay, great. Well, he found out, which he should have known, and I should have checked, and I will in the future, that right before demo was starting, or actually after demo, he had started demo of the existing pool, that it was not gonna be approved by you guys, it went against your setbacks, and that's when, unlike the gentleman before, my husband and I said, stop, do not do a single thing, we need to get this, like, we like to play by the rules. And so, now we just have a yard back there currently, as we're waiting to get this figured out with you guys. But, um, right, but what, most importantly, we can show you the approved plans, that's this exact plan approved by Ocean Forest. And so that's what we're just, and as you can see, there's also, so beyond our property, there's a huge common area where Ocean Forest comes through with, like, their landscaping to use our, the back of our house to get to other people's house to do landscaping. And so there is a huge buffer before, between us and the house behind. And then I did take pictures this morning that also show, as you can kind of see, there's like huge magnolias, like, you can't see with this new, because there's no trees being taken down or anything with the new design. Nothing will happen as far as the, because we want privacy, too, as far as trees in the back and trees on the side. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it. And then we can, if you guys don't have that approved plan.
If you wanna pass it to one of the staff members, they can get it to us, so look at it. But, so, I do have a few things here.
Okay.
Um, I have always been an advocate and will always remain an advocate that, for me personally, I wanna see a actual survey stamped by a surveyor, because when he puts his stamp on it, he's certifying everything on that document is correct and accurate.
Okay.
So, this one that was submitted, I printed to full scale. Requesting shows three and a half feet setback, or three and a half feet encroachment by seven feet wide is what the encroachment shows.
Okay.
Printed to full scale, and I verified the scale with my scale ruler, it scales to four and a half by eight. So the information on this document is incorrect.
That would be to the water line?
No, would, on this document where it says three and a half feet encroachment, that actually scales to four and a half feet. The width shows seven feet, it scales to eight feet.
It's drawn to three, it's drawn to three and a half by seven feet to the water line?
Pardon me?
It is drawn to three and a half by.
I'm, I'm telling you what, this scale right here references those numbers there do not agree. This scale here shows that at four and a half feet, not three and a half. It shows that at eight feet, not seven. I meant to bring my scale ruler, but I just forgot it today. But I printed it full scale just to verify, and I verified this scale does match the actual scale ruler, so.
Do we have a survey with it?
Yeah, we have a survey. Your request is a certified stamp survey, that would provide?
Please, step to the podium, state your name, please, sir.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Blake High Tower with Salt Design Group, part of who drew these drawings. The survey that you're referring to is the original survey stamped by a surveyor?
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Do you have, do you have that showing this information, showing exactly where the pool is gonna be on that stamp survey? That's what I wanna see.
You want that overlaid on this, on this survey?
Mm-hmm. That, that's what I would like to see. And the reason I say that is because what I'm looking in front of me is incorrect. It does not match the survey scale that is on this document in front of my face.
I'm trying to pull the, our drawing back up, but if it's.
There, there's a couple of issues here. One.
Yeah.
I just, I, I want the information to be correct, because we can't make an accurate assessment if we don't have correct information, and it's conflicting information. What is, I've got a drawing program, I can draw, draw stuff, I can tell a dimension of the program, then I can go in and override the dimensions and make it whatever hell I wanted to say.
Understand that.
And that's kind of my point here, is when I verified the scale, it's four and a half feet, not three and a half feet. So that's an additional encroachment that's not shown here. It could have simply just been an oversight, or, or what.
I believe it's a typo on the graphic. We can resubmit this drawing and confirm all scales. I personally drew the dimension lines with the AutoCAD, and it pulled out directly three and a half by the seven that's shown.
So.
So I believe the scale is a typo.
And like I say, it could have been just.
Yeah.
Some error, but it, I'm just saying, it doesn't match the scale that's printed on this document.
We can resubmit that, and we're also willing to have the surveyor stake it onsite if that.
Okay.
Prior to anything.
Other thing that I have with it is I don't see the true hardship. There's nine feet between the pool and the house. And is there, I see no reason the pool couldn't be shifted to the house and the, you know, you've got, and then at that point, you can use all of the space all the way to the fence for landscaping or chairs or entertaining areas or whatever. Even at nine feet with the, the three French doors, you can still pull it back three and a half feet, and you've still got enough safety room to where you don't walk out the door and fall into the pool.
Yeah. So I, I don't wanna speak for, but the intent was to be able to have ample space so they're not walking out of their doors into water surface. They have young kids that are gonna come running out the doors and playing, having a good ample space between the two to let them move around and have furniture around, around the pool for.
But it's also not nine feet, I don't believe. But it's, it's my understanding it was eight, but also, and then it, because also, so the problem was, we tried.
Step up, man.
We tried to then rework so that we wouldn't have to bother you guys with this this morning. We spent weeks trying to, my husband and I, them doing new drawings and us trying to rework it. The lot is just, well, it, again, that, it looks like it's super deep, but because of the Ocean Forest part in the back, it is actually fairly narrow, and the only reason we demoed the pool is to get the bigger pool space. But the problem is, if you try to start redoing it, you get to like six feet, and again, then it's like you walk out the door, and you're, and again, I have small children, and then like nephews and nieces that are really, like, it's like you're, right, I mean, yes, you're right, moving all the way to the back, but you're like right here, and we just wanted, the eight feet seemed like kind of the minimum that makes sense. And then, because you're right, then in the back, it's grass, but I guess I just.
So, here, here's another option. Flip the pool and spa one hundred and eighty degrees. Put spa on the house side, and then you gain even more space between the doors and the pool.
Okay, wait, show me.
So if you take, where your spa's on this side.
Uh-huh.
Put the spa on this side and shift the whole thing this way. Just take that, turn it around one hundred and eighty degrees.
But then you don't have enough, but then you don't have enough room to walk, because that's a walkway. There's the dining room door over, over here. And that's a walkway, and, because we've looked at something like that, too, or putting it, oh, just moving it over there, but there's then not enough room. So I mean, if you end up having like two feet, there's not enough room to walk. It, it doesn't make sense.
What's the full size of the spa?
It's supposed to be, it's small, and we're even willing to, I think it's, was it like four by four or something?
Seven, six.
The one that's on the design is six by seven? Because we talked about, we also did lots of different, trying to maneuvering of seeing how, and we like taped things out to see like, okay, if we're sitting, you know, in there, like, how small can we make it to try to get as much of that three and a half feet back?
Mm-hmm.
And we just couldn't come up with something that made sense, you know?
So, I, I guess I'm.
And again, I guess my question is, well, and this is what this is for, is like, what is your concern? Is it from a neighbor's standpoint, is it from a, like?
It's, it's the rules, it's the ordinances. You know, we have these ordinances here for a reason, and this board is here when there are true hardships involved. This is a twelve thousand square foot lot, and we're trying to encroach three feet. There's a lot of room on this. We have a lot of lots on the island that are significantly smaller, that have true hardships, something that they didn't create. This is a self-imposed hardship, because it's a design element, it has nothing, it's not, you're not forced into this. It is truly a homeowner option. So we, as a board and as builders, we try to look for other options to where, because we're not up here just to grant variances. The variances are, are supposed to be special and for special cases where something else just won't work.
But that is part of the legal process, right, is to grant variances where it's not, I, I would hope and think where it's also not impinging on someone else, or where there's not someone complaining or a safety issue, like with the other gentleman. And we did, we also, like I said, tried, not tried, I mean, that's just how we are, but we were not gonna proceed with something.
And, and we appreciate that, we, we truly do appreciate that. But then the other thing is it opens Pandora's Box, because we've got it in here, we've seen it a dozen times. Well, they got to do it, why can't I do it? That one was approved, why hadn't mine approved? So you open that Pandora's Box, and then we have no justification of why we granted that one and not this one. You know, we granted that one because they had a true unforced hardship. And this one, I just don't see the unforced hardship. This one's a, a design choice that I see are some other options. I mean, flip the whole thing one hundred and eighty degrees, shift the spa to the right, toward the fence to get, and that would give you more than enough clearance, you know, to, and that would actually get your pool three feet further away from the door.
See, I don't, I guess I'm not seeing how that, because we've, again, we've been out there with tape and with the tape measure, like, I don't, being on property, I don't see how that would work.
Who's this guy?
Yeah, you can speak.
Yeah, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Bo Parker with Salt Design Group as well.
Okay.
Part of the design team on this as well. And, uh, Mrs. McClellan is correct in terms of, you know, how it may or may not.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Mrs. McClellan has stated, we've looked at other options for them on this. But I do wanna just point out that one of the reasons, because this was a very unique, you know, planned development, I've never actually worked on one that had zero side yard setbacks and things like that. And it also appeared when we were doing our due diligence that there must have been zero rear setbacks in a lot of cases due to pools that we've seen via Q public on the neighboring properties, which, we've uploaded those into the portal as of this morning. We had requested some permit, you know, past permit information from the county, and we got the permits, but unfortunately, no attached drawings with those properties, one of which is their, their next door neighbor that's located at 104 Dunkeld. Their pool appears to be exactly on the property line.
And this, this is exactly what I was just stating, is that, okay, they did it, why can't I do it? So that's, that's the Pandora's Box that we get into, why, me personally, and my colleagues can speak for themselves, why I want to see what the true hardship is.
Right.
And have, and that just needs to be justified. If you can truly justify it, you know, I'm not here to deny everything, and, you know, we're here to look, help you find a solution that works for everybody. We're here as representatives for Glen County and the ordinances, but we have some latitude to, you know, the, you know, the county staff has, this is ordinance, this is what we have to go by. This board was put here to interpret those individually, because there are extenuating circumstances. That way, it's not a blanket policy for everybody, so. That's, me personally, that's why I wanna see what the true hardship is and why we're in this position.
I, I have one question. Maybe a suggestion, I don't know, take it. Go back to the drawing, if you don't mind. Uh, there, well, no, the one with the whole pool, there you go, right there. Just a suggestion, what about moving the, the spa to the top right side of the pool, on the other side, other corner?
That's what I saw might have mistaken.
Yeah, that, I know, and trust me, we, that was my first idea. When you're out there, though, in person, um, there's an actual, like, wall and like a wall of, which is great, again, a wall of shrub, like trees. But there's not, I'm telling you, there's not enough to walk in between, if you try to put it there, it's too tight with the corner of the house and the corner right there.
Even if the pool moves, I'm assuming north is up, if it moves south three feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could move the pool down. Looking at, looking at this drawing, you could move the pool down to where it's showing the spa now, to that, to that dotted line, which is, which is your setback line, and then put, put the spa in the top right corner of the pool, looking at it on this drawing. Y'all are looking at the same drawing that we are here on these, on our screens. So, um, what I'm saying is put it on the opposite side and in the right corner, but move the pool down to the back of the, to the setback line.
To the seven foot, so we'd gain.
Yeah, so, so right now, for the scale, you've got nine feet between the pool and those three French doors. If you move the pool south or down, well, I see the mark, almost south, to the setback line, now you have twelve feet in that space. And then you take the spa, Mr. Wildsmith said, flip it to the other side and move it to the right.
On the right, up there, so like.
So, yeah, so it, yeah, so you should still have, I mean, I'd, like I said, again, I should have brought my scale ruler, could draw it out, but, I mean, you're gaining, even if you put it there now, if the spa's only six feet, you've still got three feet of clearance, you had another three feet, so that gives you six feet to walk by it, just doing rough math.
Okay, so you guys, and I'm not saying that I would have to then talk to my husband too, but if we move the pool all the way down to the red line...
Yes.
Then that would still be approved, and then the spa just has to...
You wouldn't need, you wouldn't need a variance from, for this, if, if you moved that and did, and moved the spa, you wouldn't need a variance.
Okay.
We're just, we're just trying to come up with, you know, different suggestions, and, and listen, as Mr. Woodman said, uh, we appreciate y'all's efforts in trying to make this work. We really do, because nine times out of ten, that don't happen.
Well, and again, I, they have done some wonderful drawings, but the contractor who's, and I'm sorry, I'm still not happy with it, he's not here today, he is a licensed contractor, and...
Yeah, I, I know, I know him.
This is a, this is a major mess up on his part, and this is, but it's a mess up on our part, and we didn't think we had to go, so that, so I guess that's the hardship, is our pool got dug up, and then we were given this option of like, oh, you can basically have the same size as what you have, or like totally do a redesign that we spent a year coming up with. So I just, that's where we are, and that, that's, that's not your problem, I totally get, like, I just, that's the hardship, and that's the frustration on our end, is that we have a licensed contractor that we, that told us it was fine before, and, and then he dug up the pool, and then we found out.
Yeah, so, so you've already demoed the old pool?
Yeah, he did.
And cleaned it all up?
He did, and it's now sod.
That, that's correct, so when we were brought in originally by the contractor, what we were tasked with was creating a larger pool with a spa that allowed for more swimming area and everything for their family. As you see this, this pool, this pool, I think it's about forty, fifty percent larger than the, the old pool, plus it adds a spa. So that was demoed and graded out, and the pool contractor was prepared to dig when this was brought to their attention.
Who, who was the pool contractor?
ATP Pools and Spas.
Okay, because they just, they just finished one, ATP, they just finished one for me.
Um, question, is the pool a fiberglass drop-in or is it a shot creek built in place?
It'd be a shot creek.
So another option, that drawing that I just showed you, or you could, honestly, for that matter, you could do it here. Um, since it is shot creek, recess the spa, the three feet into the pool. We've done that quite a bit, in my brother-in-law's house, I've done it on...
Oh, we did, no, and then, again, and it depends on what you see as a hardship or not a hardship. Again, it, this is our long-term, we're in Atlanta now, but this is our long-term plan, like home will be our, um, permanent home in the future, and when you do that, again, then if you look at the, um, then there's not swimming. Again, for me, I'm a safety nut, and I like, I don't like the idea of kids jumping in, I want the pool to be separate, because I do not like the idea of kids jumping in and not see, you know, just not paying attention, I don't like that design, but...
Okay, I gotta jump in here, and, and I, and I do this in all respect, I'm, I'm the layperson here, and coming from an education background, I, I, I deal a lot in words. And so I'm still holding on to, if this truly was about a pool issue, you would not be here, because I think I understand, looking at that as a layperson, that that pool is not encroaching in the setback. So I'll go back to what I said in the beginning, and I didn't, and I couldn't hear everything you were saying, and it doesn't matter, I please don't go back and say it again, is that, for me, the issue is not the pool. The issue is the set, is, is the spa, and it's never been asked in the application, I'm reading, I got my thumb on it right here, you can, you, I'm here on my time, because you folks are asking to allow a reduced setback for a pool. There's no setback needed for a pool as I see it. So what I'm sitting here listening to is round and round and round about, we don't want to do this, we can't do this, we don't like that, we don't want that. Wait a second, please, I, I said with all respect, all respect, because I've just got to say this, because I've been sitting here.
I also don't want to sit here and be berated.
All right, both, both, like...
I don't want to be berated, please, like a child.
Please, please, both of you settle down, I'm not going to tolerate it, or, I'm gonna stop it.
Thank you, but please, please take your level, voice level down, and I'm not a student or a child.
So...
Okay? So you don't need to keep going round and round either, I hear you.
Please stop, he'll settle down, or I'll, I'll terminate it, okay? I understand, and you'll, you'll have a chance, let him say it, and I'll, we'll bring it down.
I'll speak when I want. So, I'll go back again. So I'm sitting here, and the issue's not about a pool, the issue's about a spa. And I've heard contractors give you multiple options to do that, and I've heard multiple reasons that you don't want to do it. And so my question was going to be initially, a rhetorical question, do you really want a spa? Do you really need to have a spa? Is the issue about a spa, or is the issue about a pool? And so I don't understand why the conversation has continued to go on when you keep getting suggestions to help you solve the situation, when in fact, it's not, the spa is not even part of your pool application.
The application and piece that we submitted, um, was this plan, which is asking for an encroachment with the spa, which is what's labeled. What you just read as the pool was a note that the Glen County, it was, that was posted, I did not write that, uh, write up for you, that's just how it got written by Glen County. The plan as proposed, asking for a variance, is based off of this plan right here, with the notation, asking for three and a half feet into the rear setback for the spa. At no point was the pool in question, we knew the pool was outside of the setback. This whole thing has been strictly about asking for relief for the spots up.
Does that answer your question?
No, that's fine.
Okay, I'm also not sure that the legal system is in place to answer rhetorical questions. We're asking for a variance based on a plan, um, and then your job is just to say yea or nay, and if your vote's no, that's fine, but that's what we're here for, is we, we have a plan that was drawn for us, we unfortunately had a contractor that got what he thought was the highest level. We, he, he thought the highest level of approval needed would be that biggest hurdle to jump through was going to be Ocean Forest, because they typically are very strict with what they allow and don't allow. So that is on him, and then it's also on us that we didn't double check him, we did not know that we needed to do that. So that's what we're asking for, we're asking for a, you know, um, yeah, and I actually, I just, I don't, I'm open for more questions from you guys, but that, that's kind of my statement, I guess, to your question.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, anybody else have anything for applicant? Okay, thank y'all. All right, at this point, I'll open the floor up for a public comment, anyone here for or against, would like to get up and speak? Okay? Just come to the podium, state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Mabie McClelland, um, I just want my pool back, because we were told that, um, we were gonna get our pool by Memorial Day, so we could have it for summer, um, and now we don't have a pool. And I think if we had known that that was gonna happen, then we wouldn't have even started this, these plans, because if we had known this was gonna be so hard, then we would have just kept our existing pool. Um, and I know that you might not take this into major consideration, but I do have a lot of little cousins, and my little sister, she like, they can't go out there, and if it's gonna be a hazard for them to fall in the pool, and most of them can't swim without like life jackets or parental supervision, then that's just like a hazard for them. But that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do have one question for staff, just to clarify for me, because I can't remember, and just thinking is for other potential options. Um, a freestanding hot tub, what are the requirements on it?
John Barnesworth with the Building Department. Um, pursuant to our previous conversations regarding pools and Sea Island, we'll get to that in a moment. As far as freestanding hot tubs, they are considered mobile, um, and therefore we're not going to really present any issues regarding them.
That's, that's what I was thinking, that kind of fell under that purview, isn't it?
Yep, with our last conversation about pools in Sea Island, if you recall, Sea Island had said, this is great, you can do this, we'll give you this land, everything will be fine for you. Until we discovered that fine means that they could take the land back whenever they want. In this case, Sea Island has given their task an approval to, and, uh, with all due respect, Michael, I do believe that their approval did include the, the spa, but Sea Island being as powerful and big as they are, still are not able to overrule state laws and ordinances. So the setback line is chakrasankh, you, you cannot go over the, the setback line in certain instances. In this case, you can run the water right up to the setback line, so the pool embodiment itself, the water itself can run at the setback line. You have zero setbacks, in this case on the drawing to the right of the pool, where you can move the pool over, it looks to be about two feet to the se- to the property line. You can also move down what appears to be a little over two feet to the setback, in which case you've given yourself the two little light colored bumps on the end of the long part of the house there, I believe are planters. Either, either they're there or they will, they were planned to be there. If these, if the spa were put on that lower end of the pool, there would be more than ample travel room around the end of the pool, if you were eliminate one of the planting boxes. There's room for the spa to fit, you can still have a seven foot wide patio behind the pool where you show the spa right now, because you can have pavement in the setbacks. You can have your deck chairs and portable fireplace, whatever you want back there, because they're not a construction, as long as they're at ground level. And you put your spa, a- as you're looking at the pool, on the lower left-hand side, once the pool is moved down and over to the setback line, you've got ample room there for the spa. You could even elevate the spa, in this case, the spa could not be elevated, even if we did grant the approval for it, because you can't have an elevated structure within the setback.
Right, um, sorry, again, that's not what, I just meant, I don't like to consider like, you know, the pool.
Understood, I'm just saying that there are options, we, we worked out that option with the Sea Island concern a month, month and a half ago, and these people are happy as clams. We, they shifted the pool, they moved it from my recommendations, and they are overjoyed and they're swimming in the pool now. We want you to be successful, we want you to be able to use the pool, but you also have to meet the rules that are established.
So they're going back to, um...
If you will, please, just step up here, just so we can, step up to the podium, just so we can hear.
Um, and I guess this is all, you know, it's been, again, and it's, it's actually, it's, it's a, um, scale of hardship, what that means, and I guess that's, that's why there is a panel. Um, so, but it's also very confusing as a homeowner because of the way things are in this area with you guys and Sea Island and Ocean Forest, and then like I said, people like Bill Edenfield that seem to hold the keys to everything. But if, if they did cede us that property, which they've said that they also is a possibility, a strong possibility, then that would also negate any of this as well, correct? So I guess what...
That is correct, that is correct.
But then your concern, and I'm just trying to get this right, your concern is that then they could take it back?
That, that was the case with the previous one, is they had gotten approval from Sea Island, uh, it was, they were, the similar situation, and there was a lot of empty space previous or behind it.
Yeah.
And Sea Island wasn't going to use the space, had no plans for it, um, and so they didn't care. The issue was, is it wasn't in perpetuity, it, they had the, Sea Island had the right to take that back at any given time. So that's where the problem came in, if they were gonna, you know, forever dedicate or, you know, deed that over to you, that's a different ballgame.
Well, and it's, it's just, again, this is, but it's been confusing, because then I had another representative from Ocean Forest send me a text weeks ago, that said, hey, I just heard about your extra land that you got, great news, so happy for you. And this is someone not a, not a homeowner, but like, and so it's like, oh, you know, I just, I, you don't have to agree that I have a hardship, but it's...
And I appreciate that, and if, you know, if that's something that you want to do, then if you get documentation, and staff can, can correct me if I'm wrong here, if you get actual documentation that they're deeding you that property, um, so that it effectively moves the property line, then you don't need to be here. Because if, if they deed you that property, then you're not in the setbacks to do exactly what you want to do here. But that's going to require legal deeded documentation, so that Sea Island can't say, oh, well, you know, we changed our mind, we want that property back now. So that, that's the issue with...
Do, do you think that's on the table with Sea Island?
Well, again, this is what's so confusing, that's why I'm here today, because it's like I'm, we're trying to just do, like, make everybody happy, and I want to make sure everybody is, but I get from them that, yes, it is, and then I get, but you should get the variance. And so I'm, I, I don't, and again, I wish Hank should be here, it'd be great if Bill was here, so that we can all be in one room to talk about it.
So in my conversations with Bill Edenfield, he, he first brought this to the, the, the HOA, uh, Property Owners Association, uh, to see if they would be willing, because they had done exactly what you said before, they had ceded some land over to them. And in this situation, they voted no, to not cede that land over. So I don't personally feel like that's a realistic option on, on this case.
Okay.
If it were, and if we can, you know, go back to them and say, you know, if this space died, then we could get an additional two and a half feet ceded, and we would then go to them and, or, then we would engage the surveyor and have the property replanted at that point in time, right?
Right.
But I'd also like to just say, I don't see anyone that sign has been in our yard, you know, for a long time, to call anyone in that has a problem with it, or, and there's not anyone here that has it, I, I get the rules, I know, and, but then this is why, again, there's a process of asking, the appeals process, and then asking for the variance. But I just do want to say that I would, I would feel differently if there were people here saying that they didn't like it, or they didn't feel comfortable with it, I would, again, totally understand that. I, um, that's just my, we just want to move on with this project, and...
And that's what, you know, we, we do too, as Mr. Barnesworth commented, we, you know, we want you to have a product that you're happy with and a house that you can live in, but the underlying ordinance or rule are the county ordinances. Sea Island aside, uh, the, the land in the dirt's still Glen County, um, where Glen County rules apply. Um, unfortunate, it's unfortunate that you're in the situation that everything hasn't been as forthcoming to you as, as you would like for it to be, um, sometimes that happens, and we as contractors deal with it as well. Uh, and again, it's unfortunate, so that's why we're trying to come up with other options of, excuse me, shifting the pool, relocating, and that was my comment with the, um, I know it's great, we built a ton of them with the spa attached to the pool, but that's why I was acting as an option, is if the spa is not part of the pool, if it's freestanding, you can put it anywhere you want, the pool can stay right where it is, if that was an option, I'm just trying to come up with, yes, sir?
So, no, uh, according to, um, Stephanie Lee, that is not an option, because we actually did address that, we actually tried to flip the scenario and say, what if it was a built-in koi pond or something like that? So that was a discussion that went back and forth between us and Bill Edenfield, too, her, just to, you know, differentiate between, you know, that type of a structure being attached.
I'm not, I'm not talking a built-in, so I'm talking like, you know, a...
A standalone.
Like a wellis hot tub or something that you buy type, that's what I'm referring to.
Is that different than a, um, but would there be a problem, like a standalone is the one, yeah, you buy, but if you're digging into the ground and having pipes, does that make it different?
It, it's, it has to be one hundred percent to, to, as Mr. Barnesworth was, was talking about, for it to sit in the setbacks, it needs to be like a, you know, a, you know, my personal was a wellis, or whatever, and one that they deliver to you, and you're just wired to it, all the plumbing is self-contained, it's not plumbed into the pool, it's not incorporated to the pool, it is completely independent in and of itself.
Sorry, yeah, I guess what she was asking is it, if it could be recessed, you know, I mean, is there any reason why you couldn't build so that it appeared to be more flush and built in with the pool?
I, as a contractor, I wouldn't dare do that, because now you're putting motors in the dirt, and it's not going to last six months, and this can... in the dirt, and it's not gonna last six months in this conditions, but, um, from a county ordinance, I?
With a retaining wall and a sump pump and everything else.
Yeah, that one, uh, I would have to, you know, I would have to defer to the Building Department on that, and I don't think, I don't know, Mr. Farnsworth or Mr. Carvey, if, if, say if they were to dig a hole, they bought a freestanding spa, dug a hole, sat it down, where is it graded, is that?
Long as it can be removed, it can be elevated, or it can be lowered, but to be elevated, couldn't be in the setbacks.
Couldn't be in the setback, but if it's, they dig a hole and drop it in, then, then it can be, you just can't do it on any kind of platform.
The only problem with that, the motor's at the bottom of those.
That's, yeah.
And I don't think they want that site on their backyard and their pool.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, because it, six months, yeah, I, I would agree with that.
They want, they want a fixed, they want a fixed spa, which is part of the pool.
Gotcha, okay, all right, thanks, sir.
Because I cannot resist at least adding one more thing, we're looking at a square pool. Have you considered a kidney-shaped pool with the indentation at the lower right-hand side in which you build your spa, so it's away from the children, you still have a seven-foot walk-around within the setback to get to the spa? The kidney-shaped pool, because of its shape, can be incorporated into more space, and yet still allow you areas to get out of the house, to walk around the pool, and to enjoy the area.
I would say no, because it doesn't, one thing that we like at Ocean Forest is that is that things are?
Square.
The cottages are all the same, I just feel like from a community standpoint, that's just?
All right, I'm simply, simply trying to throw out options here, because that's what we're here for, is to throw out options.
So I think we're trying to just, we keep everything, because that's how, I don't know, that's how I think it's, is that all the rooms is the same.
Okay. All right, so we're, I think it's still at the board discussion, anyone have any other discussion? The board, if not, I will open the floor for, uh, an entertaining motion.
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, y'all may hate me for this, but in light of Ocean Forest and Sea Island being okay with this, uh, I think, I mean, I do think there's another option, but, you know, I wish they would do it, but I'm going to make a motion to approve it, uh, as stated, um, just because Sea Island is okay with it, and, there is, you know, vacant property behind it, so.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion, we approve ZV twenty-five nineteen, uh, as stated.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion on the floor in a second, those in favor? Those opposed?
As you probably know, under county ordinances, no action is a denial, basically, so they can appeal to the VOC, should they like to.
Okay, so it says we're divided on it, the same with the other, only you have the option to appeal to the Glen County Board of Commissioners, can, you heard, you email staff, and they can help you with that if you choose to proceed that route, or hopefully, um, you know, we've tried to provide some options to make it fit, uh, but I understand, you know, what, what you want to try to achieve as well, so, all right, thank you. All right, moving on, any new business?
The next available county commission meeting, like I told the previous gentleman, is July seventeenth, uh, no, we have no further county business.
All right, thank y'all, meeting adjourned.